Everyone to the marks seven, March twenty-four. The committee of science and commission. Will clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Vanier.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the pledge allegiance and move to silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice in all. Thank you.
First item on today's agenda is the citizens' open forum. Time set aside for any citizens who would like to bring matters to the commission's agenda that are not on the day's official agenda. Is there anyone here for that purpose? Seeing none, we will continue on. There's no awards and proclamations today or public hearings, but we will continue with the consent agenda.
Item six point one, approve the minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand and eight. Item six point two, resolution number zero eight sixty-five zero four, authorize an agreement with Sunflower Insurance Group Incorporated to provide insurance broker services. Item six point three, authorize the purchase of a grit pump for the wastewater treatment plant from JCI Industries in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Item six point four, acceptance of a public utility easement dedication on a lot east, on East Cloud Street adjacent to the Red Fox Edition.
Any questions on a particular consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero. There's no development business today, so we continue with items of administration.
Item eight point one, second reading ordinance number zero seven ten thousand four hundred and seventeen, providing a change in zoning district classification from RS to R1 on property legally described as lots one through seven, block one, and lots one through twenty, block two, in the Red Fox Edition.
This motion passed on first reading previously, and I'd entertain any additional comment if there is any. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd move for adoption of ordinance zero seven one zero four one seven on second reading.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance zero seven dash one oh four one seven, providing for a zoning district change from RS to R1 on a particular piece of property in the Red Fox Edition. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Commissioner Vanier.
Aye.
Mayor Jelka.
Aye. That passes five to zero.
Item eight point two, approval of a grant request from Thunderstruck Incorporated to fund the purchase of fabrication equipment.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The parent company of Thunderstruck has been in Salina, operating the truck lift specialist operation for the past thirteen years. Recently, they brought the Thunderstruck line to Salina. Basically, they make grill guards, bumper replacements, running boards, step bars, and headache racks for trucks. They currently employ eight people. What they're wanting to do is add six new primary jobs by the end of the year. Probably will happen much faster than that. The average wage is right around fifteen dollars an hour, which is a little higher than the average wage in Saline County for the same type of job. They're requesting an SEDIC incentive grant of twenty-one thousand dollars. This is to help with immediate equipment needs. They're looking at immediately buying about ninety-five thousand dollars worth of equipment, though by the end of the year, they expect to buy anywhere around the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment. When we equate this to the number of jobs that they're looking at adding, the six, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars per job, just to give you that ratio. Attached, you'll find the Wichita State University Benefit Cost Analysis, and we're always looking for anything above one point oh for all the taxing entities, and certainly, we're well above that. This would be funded by the twelve and a half percent portion of the economic development allocation of the quarter cent sales tax. We do believe that this does comply with our strategic plan, goal number three, that deals with the community of quality mixed-use development, as any healthy local industry such as Thunderstruck is good for a community. We took a look at this, as we do all of these applications, to ensure that we believe it fulfills the intent of the resolution that outlines the purpose of the grant and the use of the funds, and the three entities that staff this for you all confirm that it does. So as a result, the SEDIC committee recommended approval at their March thirteenth meeting, and staff recommends alternative one to approve the request. I've got quite a bit of information here. Be happy to answer any questions. We also have officials from Thunderstruck and from the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce who may also be able to answer questions or provide any additional input.
Questions, the staff report? Thank you very much. I'd like to open it for any public comment, if there is any. Give us your name and address.
Jason Brown with Thunderstruck. I just wanted, first of all, thank you guys for looking at this proposal that they've worked with the chamber to get. So, is there any, I don't know if there's any questions or anything about the stuff? It's a unique product, and we're really growing a lot faster than I thought it was going to. It's, oh, thanks. Here's a sample field. Ours is a unique design, or use, portability, and we've ended on the diamond shape, which were strength and the look.
How long have you been in Salina, the company?
We just moved Thunderstruck here, but I've been with Lift Truck Specialist. I started it thirteen years ago, and say, we employ seven employees right now, and it's growing too, so.
Perfect.
How do you bend square tubing without creating a crease?
Very carefully. We've got the equipment, some of the equipment that we've got does that, so.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the grant request from Thunderstruck Incorporated to fund the purchase of fabrication equipment in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion is to approve an SEDIC grant to Thunderstruck to fund the purchase of fabrication equipment in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Passes five to zero.
Item eight point three, resolution number zero eight sixty-five zero five, admitting the comprehensive fee schedule by admitting the supervised probation fee.
Judge Stoss?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We're asking that you adopt this resolution, which would increase the supervised probation fee by ten dollars. The reason for this request is we want to be able to do onsite random drug testing. We feel this will enhance our enforcement of probation conditions. Everyone who's placed on probation with municipal court is subject to random testing as a condition of their probation, but due to the complications of actually carrying that out, we rarely test probationers, and this will allow us to do true random testing of those on probation and impose the cost on those who would be subject to the testing rather than spreading the cost elsewhere. We have information in the report about the expense that's involved. Confirmation testing, we wouldn't expect to happen very often, but we think with increasing the fee to ten dollars, it would cover both the onsite testing and the confirmation testing when that becomes necessary.
Questions, the staff report? Thank you very much. Any public comment on the proposed fee change? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt resolution number zero eight sixty-five oh five, increasing the supervised probation fee from fifty to sixty dollars.
Second.
Motion is to approve resolution zero five dash six five oh five, admitting the comprehensive fee schedule by increasing the fee for supervised probation from fifty to sixty dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Passes five to zero.
Item eight point four, resolution number zero eight sixty-five zero three, authorize an agreement with, for a raw water study, supply study.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In a nutshell, this agreement today ties up the loose ends from the two thousand and seven Water Action Plan, and most importantly, it will provide the city a roadmap to meet our water supply needs through the year two thousand and sixty. The raw water supply study scope of services includes nine specific tasks, which range from project initiation and background, data collection, demand projections, water right and regulatory review, review of existing sources of supply, conservation plan, which is task six, and that will tie up the majority of the loose ends from the Water Action Plan from setting trigger points for our drought emergency plan. Will deal with domestic wells, and also include incentives for low-flow watery efficient fixtures and development of a long-term water conservation plan, and then, public education. For this project, we include public involvement of water professionals, local stakeholders, and the citizens at large. Currently, six meetings are planned with this group of individuals. Three sessions are planned with the city commission, which range from review of the existing sources of supply at the time we're doing alternative evaluations, and then just prior to the final report. The agreement before you today is written in a costplex fixed fee format with an amount not to exceed of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. The study is scheduled to be complete within one year from the notice to proceed. In task five, there's an item that pertains to water rights and regulatory review by Fulton Seakin Attorneys at Law, and they're available to render opinions on our water rights in the event we find that to be necessary. The scope and associated fee for this work is not included in this agreement and will be negotiated separately between the attorneys and the city of Salina. The funding for this agreement is allocated from the two thousand and eight Water and Wastewater Enhancements category of the capital improvement program, and it was allocated two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I believe that this meets our conformance, conforms with the strategic plan by meeting specific goals and action items, such as the development of a citizens advisory committee to provide integrated input for capital improvement and planning activities. Probably most importantly, goal six, the city will recognize the importance of its natural resources and make practical efforts to preserve them, and virtually, this report takes all of that into account. It is a comprehensive approach to water use and conservation, including the creation of a long-range raw water plan, updating of the current conservation practices, reviewing possible amendment of our existing water pricing, and most of all, community education. And we do intend to include water professionals, local stakeholders, and the citizens at large. Staff recommends that the city commission approve resolution number zero eight sixty-five oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated to conduct a raw water supply study in the amount not to exceed of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred. Other options would be to deny this resolution, resolution, or instruct staff to revise the scope of services. Today, Aaron Hunt with HDR Engineering Incorporated and Don Linderman with HDR are here, and the three of us would try to answer any questions you might have. I didn't go into a lot of specific detail. I thought I would, I would let you ask me your specific questions as opposed to trying to guess what might be important to you.
It's living dangerously.
I know it is. But there's a lot here. It's a large project with a lot of components, and hopefully, you had a chance to read through the scope, but if you do have specific questions, we'll be glad to answer those.
This is calling for another, a new citizens advisory board. Is that anticipated to just last the duration of this specific project, or are we talking about another permanent citizens advisory board on water issues?
Just to last the duration of this project is my current plan to get us through a plan for water conservation and where we might head to the future, but at the duration of the study, then their duties would be complete unless we found need to carry on. At this point in time, had not intended that.
Is there some statutory requirement to do one of these every certain amount of time, or?
A raw water supply study?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of. It's just the point that we have done several of them over the past few years in technology, and there are several changes in water rights and water supplies that just make it necessary to take a fresh look at it to make sure we're heading in the right direction.
I was just going to ask, under task five, you talk about legal counsel to render opinions on our water rights. Do you anticipate us having to do that, or because of all the issues in the past couple of years, are we pretty square on that?
We do. Commissioner, we, there are many legal aspects to all of this, and as it relates to the roles of various other governmental units and water rights and so forth, so we do anticipate some. Not sure until we get into it to what degree we would really look at that, and obviously, we will start with our general counsel, with Greg, but certainly, we think there will be a need for some specialized legal consultation in all this.
Okay. Talk about reviewing the rate structure, and I know we have, I believe, a contract with Wilson and Company on that. Is that correct?
And we do, under the background on the first page, we do have a draft report from Wilson and Company, and that's currently under staff review.
Okay.
And we will take a cursory review from HDR's knowledge of all of the different communities they've worked at to make sure what we've done is proper. Take another look at that, a cursory review.
And when we look at this twelve months from now, we'll see Wilson and Studies' report also?
For the-
Rate changes?
The rate changes, it's my intention, and Jason can agree or disagree, that we'll be bringing that to you in the very near future.
Yeah, I think-
What Wilson currently recommends for the next five years as far as our overall rates, and then we'll be taking a look at the water conservation rates.
Very near future would be?
Two months?
Yeah, probably sooner than that, if we can. What we're weighing is, is in the, last year, we looked at restriction-based control over the water usage, which is fine, and the intention of that was to shave the peaks off, and we think it did that. It didn't bring the overall use down all that much. It did a little bit, but not much, and so what we're looking at is a tool that many communities in Kansas, Kansas has put together, which is a conservation-based pricing tool, and it's, the simplified version is, is you may compare against a certain number of low use months, and then if you exceed that by any or over a certain percentage, then you get into a different rating schedule, and it's intended to use pricing to reduce usage overall. So that's really what we're looking at, and Martha and I will get together on that. Our intention is to be able to provide some notification, obviously, on that for those who would, you know, irrigate and so forth, and we're getting about to the time, although April should be a pretty good month. Towards the end of May, you start to see more irrigation, certainly in June, it gets up, so our hope is to get that in front of you as quickly as we can, take a final look at it, make sure we're comfortable with the logic there and the rate structure, and get in front of you for action.
And how far in depth will they go into as far as doing something with the wastewater treatment plant reusing the water?
As far as the different options of-
Different options.
Everything from using it for irrigation for the local golf courses to the soccer fields, any type of recreational use, plus recharge of the groundwater.
Okay, and that will be included in this report also?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Vanier's question about the involvement of the attorney, attorneys in this. I know that there's some dispute over how much water we actually have rights to in Canopus, and I think you attended some meetings last year, was in Linsburg, about that subject, and who is the ultimate arbiter of that kind of, if we got in position where we needed that water, who is the ultimate arbiter? Do we know?
Probably the Division of Water Resources.
Or actual water in Canopus Reservoir. Currently, we, we do not have any storage, the city of Salina in Canopus. That's one of the items we'll look at. What, what there is rights to is whatever inflow is coming into the reservoir, that amount in the stream below is the least amount that could be considered. Currently, it's based on the discharges from Canopus Lake on the Corps of Engineers' operation manual, which ranges from ten cubic feet to fifty cubic feet during the year. Currently, the Smoky Hill River is in a gaining stage because the groundwater levels are up. They're discharging fifteen cubic feet, and we're still seeing a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty in the river, so I don't know that that answers your specific question, but to date, in Canopus Reservoir, we do not have a contract for any portion of that water.
Yeah, that's correct. Basically, there are three parties that we're working with. The Corps of Engineers owns and manages Canopus Reservoir, and so they determine through a manual what that discharge that Martha was referring to, what that rate is, and it does change at different seasons of the year. And then, once it gets into the water, you get into the Division of Water Resources realm where they deal with water rights, which you can take from your wells, which you can take from the river, but at the same time, the state water office has purchased storage in the reservoir, and then they assign rights to that storage, and so they become a player as well. So it's, ultimately, you really have to work with all three. Once it leaves the reservoir, you're looking at probably working with two, and I think I'm going to sway towards the side that says the Division of Water Resources is going to need to agree with whatever happens and all that.
That would be correct.
My question was kind of answered with Commissioner Purney's. On the citizens advisory board, how are we going to solicit those candidates, and about how many will be on that board?
Currently, we'll use the expression for interest form, and then that group would be selected by the mayor and then approved by resolution through the city commission. Currently, my intent is hopefully about ten.
Okay.
A reason, give or take from that size, and they would, I'm assuming, will all have interests in different fashions of this study, whether it be water conservation or raw water supply. They may not be interested in every facet, but we're going to try to get them to be open-minded through the whole course of the study.
And it's just, Tim, I'm sorry, it's just during this, this research period, this twelve, these twelve months?
That's correct.
Did I understand you correctly?
That's our intent right now, unless for some reason we find value in carrying that on, but at this point, do not see that.
Commissioners, one thing we're going to have to look at with that advisory group is what amount of information will be presented that would be considered confidential and potentially closed-record information, because there are lots of things that relate to long-term water. It could be purchase of property, you know, someone else's rights. There could be a lot of things in which would, topically, would fall under the closed-session type situation, so we need to probably talk through that just a little bit more before we-
That was my concern.
-jump into pointing that, and then get back with you and see what you want to do.
And we've defined that in our scope of services, that that's an issue to determine what's confidential, so that it doesn't get released unnecessarily.
Two comments and a question. I think a comprehensive look at water supply and use is money well spent. I'm assuming that all of these tasks are tasks that we feel are justified. For instance, task one, I was hoping we could buy them barbecue and give them a list of phone numbers and save seventy-four hundred dollars. And then, on, say, task number five, review of existing sources of supply, is that beyond the scope of what our staff is capable of providing?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
It's fairly detailed. We'll be looking at every one of our sources in great detail and very time-consuming.
Okay.
And that's where we possibly could get into the issue with additional rights. It's fairly complicated.
Okay.
We can identify possible sources. The question is the evaluation of those, and that's part of the identification.
Okay.
It's a deep evaluation.
And then, I guess my last comment was, after, you know, this is a chunk of money for a study, but obviously, there's a lot, a lot of stuff, a lot of data collected and examined here. I just, you know, this is a study that's going to last the course of a year. I just hope that at the end of this, as time fades, we actually do something with this, that we have like a meat and potato plan here that we can, that we can substantiate. As it sits, you know, we've spent some money on studies that seem to be out there floating that we haven't done anything with, and I just hope that there's immediate sort of return on this.
I believe there will be, and some of the previous studies go back fifteen, twenty years ago, and a good share of those studies have been completed. The phases at the water treatment plant, as far as the additional raw water supplies, some of those areas have been held off on, and again, technology changed to where we might have a better look at a different source of water supply. And so we think it's time to make sure we're going down the right road.
Sure.
Be a lot of money invested.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much. I would entertain any public comment, if there is any, on the proposed raw water supply study? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution zero eight six five oh three, authorizing you to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., to conduct a raw water supply study in the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion is to approve resolution zero eight dash sixty-five oh three, authorizing agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., for a raw water supply study in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item eight point five, resolution number zero eight sixty-five zero six, appointing members to the comprehensive plan focus group committees.
I wanted to read the names and thank everybody who expressed interest in serving on these focus group committees. Under community and people, we have Deborah Devine, David Hawkesworth, Brian Kinnaird, Nancy Klostermeyer, Lisa Petty, Doug Rimp, and Greg Stevens. Under connectivity, we have Phil Black, Kim Brown, Brad Jenkins, Ted Minton, and Nancy Reese. Under downtown, we have Trapper Booten Bach, hope I pronounced his last name right, Amy Cope, Karen Hauser, Nancy Hodges, Carolyn Micusil, Terry Sherman. Under economic development, Dwayne Custer, James Hall the fourth, Jeff Mays, Kelly Mowbray, Rick Ryan, and Lawrence Wedder. Under growth and development, Chris Curtis, Kurt Cusick, Brian Hedgepatch, Shane Kibbe, Don Mars, Michelle Real, Gary Waldron, Barbara Young. Under neighborhoods and housing, Phyllis Anderson, Doris Benninger, Kelly Dunn, Tricia Grace, Diethra Gruncella, Mark Lobbys, Wayne Montgomery, Tom Mulhern. Under parks and recreation, Chris Boyer, Ruth Cathcart-Rake, John Hubeline, Kylie Moody, Doug Ruddock, Wayne Schneider, and Amy Warthersweens. And under youth, we have Tess Blackwell, Dwayne Grace, Grant Hodges, Bob Molka, Joe McKenzie, and Hazel Pierce. So I would entertain a resolution making those appointments.
Mayor, I'd move for the adoption of resolution number zero eight six five zero six, appointing members to the comprehensive plan focus group committees.
Second.
Motion is to approve resolution zero eight dash six five oh six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
One quick question. Are we, there was some discussion when this pre-list was sent out to us in the packet that we might leave the application period open for another couple of weeks-
Mr. Greg?
Yeah.
Add to this. Are we going to do that or not?
That is accurate in terms of discussion. We're still receiving some applications, or expression of interest forms, and because of scheduling, Gould Evans Consultants has set the meeting date a week later than we anticipated, so if the commission is so inclined, we can take applications through the third of April, process them at the city, the following city commission meeting, and still have enough time to get them appointed before the focus group meetings that same week.
I, for one, am so inclined.
Anybody still interested, they can fill out.
Yes, we still have a number of them out, and we are receiving a few yet today.
Okay.
I anticipate we may receive a few more.
Good. Good. No further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.